Good evening. Please take your seats if you can. We have a little bit of an unusual circumstance this evening, so I am going to open an emergency meeting this evening to take care of a problem that we have here in the city. And at which time, we will then adjourn from that meeting and we will reopen then and conduct our normal business at that time. So with the opening of the emergency meeting, I'd like to welcome everybody. This is November the 5th, 2019, and this is the Yukon City Council Emergency Meeting. We have one item on the agenda. Mr. Crosby.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We were informed today and started looking into a sewer line that is broken on 10th Street, around 9th and 10th. And the problem is, there's about five businesses on this line. This is a private line that was put in, we don't know how many years ago, 50, 60 years ago. And sewer just running on the ground and looking at it. And nobody knows whose line it is, but we've, in order to get it repaired and take care of, we need to put a public line in along the alleyway and get the connections through our contractor that we have presently, Mr. Brewer Construction. They've given us a bid of $26,670.30 to get it fixed. And when it gets us approved, hopefully we can get the company out tomorrow and begin work on this and get this repair completed. It's not healthy to have that sewage running on the ground at times, and it would be beneficial if the council would approve it.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion, please?
Make a motion that we approve the amount.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from anyone on the panel? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
The measure passes, and therefore, at this time, that was the last item in the emergency agenda. We therefore have this agenda meeting adjourned. Now you're ready for the second wrap. We don't have those kind of things very often. So fortunately. Once again, I would like to wrap the gavel, open us up, and welcome to the November the 5th, 2019 Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meeting in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma, at 7:00 PM. This evening, the invocation will be given by Pastor Gary Reynolds of the First Church of the Nazarene here in Yukon. And following our invocation, we will have the flag salute. Pastor Reynolds.
Our gracious God, we ask your blessing on all those who have gathered in this place. In particular, we ask that you would give a measure of wisdom to all of our elected leaders. We give you thanks for them. We pray that you will guide them in their deliberations and help them to remember, the words they speak are spoken for all of us, with graciousness, with generosity, with thoughtfulness. We ask that you would help them, and we give you thanks, and we ask it all in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
McCarron?
Here.
Yanda?
Here.
Kachini?
Here.
Selby?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Presentations and proclamations, Mr. Shivers. Do we have anything this evening?
None this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. This is our visitor section. The section of the proceedings is for visitors who would like to address the Yukon City Council on a non-agended item. Each person will be given three minutes to address the council, and by open meeting rules, no discussion will take place. Do we have anyone here this evening who wishes to address the council on a non-agended item? Did you receive any requests?
No requests, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone who wishes to. Thank you very much. Proceeding on, we will now recess as the Yukon City Council, and we will reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A on the Yukon Municipal Authority Agenda is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can approve those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of October the 15th, 2019; B. Payment of material claims in the amount of $54,892.81; C. Entering into a short-term commercial lease contract renewal with the commissioners of the Land Office of the State of Oklahoma for water production from three wells on Oklahoma School Land Trust property in Oklahoma County, at a variable rate based on water produced, for the term beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2022. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item 2A, consider approving Resolution YMA 2019-05, a resolution to increase utility deposit rates relating to City of Yukon Code Ordinances, Chapter 114, Utilities. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. A little, couple of questions about the increase. This increase is due to what reason?
Mr. Crosby.
We recommend an increase to this, and this is mainly to only those people, first of all. It would not affect anybody that presently has water service with the city. This is only people that would have new service coming into the city. And the reason we're asking for that is that when people don't pay and we go to collect, I believe our average bill, I think we showed you over the last few months, was like $186 that were uncollectible. And our present deposit's $40, and this would be $85, which is about the average in the metropolitan area that we showed the council previously. And this would just help cut back the amount of money that we would lose.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
This comes a time when you have to decide, do you go with what you believe, what the people want, or what's best for the city? And so I'm going to vote yes.
Wooten?
Item 3A, consider approving Resolution YMA 2019-06, a resolution declaring and setting rates relating to the City of Yukon Ordinances, Chapter 114, Utilities, Article 4, Utility Services Outside of Corporate Limits. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
A motion and a second? Is there any other, any more discussion on this? Seeing none, vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 on the council agenda is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda, so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. City manager recommends a motion that will approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of October the 15th, 2019; B. Payment of material claims in the amount of $354,307.68; C. Designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D. Denial of claim number 207161-ME from Max Smith Jr. for a traffic accident as recommended by Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group; and E. Setting the date for the next regular council meeting for November the 19th, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item 2, reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Mr. Crosby, do you have anything this evening?
No reports this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 3, consider approving Resolution 2019-21, a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, for the purpose of electing one council member from Ward 3 and one council member from Ward 4 for four-year terms ending in May of 2024. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Wooten?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item 4, consider approving ordinance 1394, an ordinance which amends the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by adding Article 4 to Chapter 114, Utilities, to a. clarify the procedures and standards for extending utilities and sanitation services outside of the corporate limits; b. to establish fees and rates for users outside of the corporate limits; and c. to address violations and establish penalties for code violators and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
This is when we have somebody new coming in, and they're going into not just Yukon, but also Oklahoma City area, right?
This only addresses those people outside our city limits.
Outside of city limits.
No one in Yukon and our own city limits will be affected by this ordinance.
All right. Are we going to be charging them enough to cover any?
This will cover our capital costs that we will incur as the area will develop outside our corporate limits, mainly to the west of Frisco Road.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item 4A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number 1394. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 5, consider approving the specifications and authorizing the city engineer to advertise and receive bids providing unit pricing for the 2020 concrete and asphalt paving drainage, water, and sewer projects contract. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this issue?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the contract that Brewer Construction presently have, and there's an item in that if this, we go out for bids, whoever gets that, we will have the option to carry it and to renew it for the additional two years. But after three years, by state law, you have to go ahead and rebid the project and on this item. So again, we will be going out for bids, listing bids, and it'll come back to you for approval.
It won't, we're not limited to who we can pick, though?
No.
There's no limitation?
As long as they bid.
It's wide open.
It's wide open.
Open bid.
It's, we have to advertise, and we do it, like I say, in a magazine and publication that's accepted by all contractors and whatever we put out. These, we usually have a prequalification, and we usually use the Oklahoma City Pre-qualified List, which means they have to have so much insurance, so much this. They've already got a list of many, many people, and any of them can bid on this project.
So the current company now providing the service is not going to be limited where they cannot apply again?
He can bid again if he so desires.
He can bid again, all right.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item 6, consider awarding the bid for the Fire Station Number 2 Flooring Rebid Project to Owens Concrete Staining and approving the contract amount in an amount of $38,760 as recommended by the fire chief. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Chief, you want to just comment that we had more than one bid there?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We had two bids, and this is the lower of the two bids for the project.
Okay, and you feel like they're the best folks for the job, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Vote please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item 7, consider approving the interlocal cooperative agreement and buy in between Oklahoma City and the City of Yukon for the construction of an interchange at Frisco Road and Interstate 40 as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item 8, consider approving Amendment Number 1 to the City of Yukon Year 17 CDBG Small Cities Set Aside Asphalt Roadway Improvement Project. To amend as the as-built quantities for completed work by Swatch Paving Company, Inc., at a revised contract price of $160,038.49, and that was a price reduction of $43,186.51 as recommended by the city engineer, and that was just a, well, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
Okay. And I have a second, and a second. Okay, now we have some discussion. Robbie, that just, they were baiting to us because they did it cheaper, or?
No, we just, since we were doing an asphalt overlay with base repairs and things, we had some additional quantities just to make sure if we needed them or not. And so we did not.
We did not require them, so they're poor.
You just came in under. We were able to save some money.
Well, that's an under-budget win.
Well, I'd rather, rather go this way than the other way.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Consider accepting the City of Yukon Year 17 CDBG Small Cities Set Aside Asphalt Roadway Improvement Project and placing the maintenance bonds into effect as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item 10, consider approving the conditional use permit for Pets and People Humane Society, Inc., for the new pet rescue facility, 701 Inla, Unit A, with conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Is there any discussion? On this issue? Okay. Seeing none, vote please.
Kachini?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item 11, consider entering into an interlocal agreement between the City of Bethany, the City of War Acres, and the City of Yukon concerning the establishment of a joint administrative board and funding a private nonprofit entity to manage the operations and programming for a historic Route 66 district in the environs of the 39th Street Expressway between the eastern city limits of the City of War Acres and Frisco Road. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept.
Any discussion? Vote please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 12, consider approving temporary traffic calming devices on Kingsbridge Ridge Drive. All costs to be paid for by the Kings Ridge Homeowners Association as recommended by the Traffic Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on this item? Mr. Crosby, do you want to have any comments there? I certainly do.
I'll be glad to answer the questions. I've had several people call me concerning this, and when you look at the cones and stuff they're going to put up, they said, is this a precedent? And it would be, that any community wants to come in and put different traffic devices up. I mean, and the council proved it. We've set a precedent that allow them to do so, even though it may be temporary, as it proposed, to see how it works out. But as you know, we have gated communities that, and we have people that decided, once they have a gated community, they've got to maintain their roads inside that, and we have people that don't want the gated community anymore. It gets to be quite a quandary when you start looking at, are we letting every individual design their roads? And I mean, that's just a question that this council would have to ask itself.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm kind of happy they're going with cones rather than those speed bumps, because I think that's put a heavier cost on us, wouldn't it?
Well, it's not us. That's the point, is they're, they're saying it's.
They're going to pay for it themselves.
Right, and that's, you know, my.
Is there a reason they went with the cones, which are unsightly, rather than the bump?
I, you know, I don't know what the reasoning and judgment was. I do not know. I don't, I don't know if anyone else does. Mr. Horton, do you have any comments? None? Okay, you don't know why they went that way, right? Is there anyone here that wants to speak to that?
Mr. Montgomery?
We knew we had somebody out there.
Yes, I'll be glad to, my name is James Montgomery. I'm on the track commission. I'll be glad to answer your questions about this. First of all, what's going to be installed will not be what you refer to as cones, they're more of delineators, which are plastic tubes, basically.
But they're the ones that were in the pictures that were supplied in our packet?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. This was brought to us about three or four months ago from the homeowners association there at Kings Ridge, with the concern that they have the perceived notion of speeding through that area. And after we had done our studies and everything, it showed pretty much that the speed limits were pretty much obeyed and adhered to. But being also a state traffic engineer for the state of Oklahoma, we have a hard time trying to convince people that what they perceive and what we come up with is two different things. So as an interim for this, we're looking at installing some islands with the delineators, and also what we call a narrowing of the street at one location between two blocks. There's our hope that maybe with that, people have the notion, you know, don't go through here that quick or anything like that. Particularly, one intersection there coming off of what would be Vandyment there, there's sort of like a little chicane there once you come to a stop. And I happened to be there one day, and people are not following directly as it should be. They just cut right across the street into the other lane before they correct themselves. So that'd be one area that'd be noticed, and hopefully a big improvement. People, you know, instead of trying to cut through, do what you're supposed to be doing.
I know of another young man who went before you guys in my ward, Ward 2, and had the same problem, but they don't live in a home ownership association, and so the city is not going to make any accommodations for those people, right?
Yes, ma'am. We will not at this point. I will bring up another point, as an aside to this, there are speed humps. Speed bumps, you will not allow on the street anyway. You get these in your shopping mall areas like this, and basically, they're not supposed to be used.
The ones like on McConnell?
No. Up here, shopping area, Chisholm.
Okay.
Shopping area, those are speed bumps. And anybody that's run over them, you know what happens? If you try to go too fast, get ready to pay a big repair bill for your front end. A speed hump allows you to go, suppose, to speed limit through there, and it's just kind of gentle up and over at that point. There are a few locations within the city that they are being used right now. So the one you mentioned, McConnell, someone pointed out to me today, there's one over around the Sunrise Edition, over around Skyview Elementary School area on one of those streets. He had to remind me of, and I thought, okay, I know where you're at. And maybe one or two others within the city. As far as I know, nobody's ever complained about them, and seem to operate pretty good.
Yeah, I guess I'll bring up my concerns here. I'm sorry, is there anyone else?
Well, my question is, is this the only option? Was this the only option as far as?
There are two other ways, there are a couple of ways of looking at it. We could do enforcement, you know, have the police go in there and see if they can catch anybody speeding through there. Or you basically put in a fiscal barrier, which would be concrete or asphalt built up. To the intersections, you would be looking at a divider in those two areas. And then the one where we're doing a little narrowing there would be concrete being, you pull it out to where you narrow the lanes on both sides 12 feet. Those are the other two options. And I don't know, if I was to recommend, if the city, if the police chief was willing to put somebody in there watching, doing speeding, I would say do an unmarked car, because that's the only way you're going to catch them. But, you know, again, that's, again, to the decision of the police chief and how he wants to do that. Anything else?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Oh, I guess I did have one question.
Yes, sir.
If, are we setting a precedent in the sense that if we say that, because the homeowners, you know, and I respect their concerns and everything, but are we setting a precedent then where we have to come back and say, anybody that wants some delineators and stickers but are we setting a precedent then where we have to come back and say anybody that wants some delineators and stickers out in front of their house because they don't like the way their neighbor backs out of their driveway and that, are we putting ourselves in that position? And where would we be with that? Once we set a precedent like that, would we have any inability to go back and say, this is not the right way to be doing things? Because I'm assuming this is a trial balloon.
Yes, sir, it is. It's a trial from the standpoint, we want to see how effective it may be going through these two, three areas that are there. As far as a precedent, with the traffic commission, I believe we can reasonably make a decision whether we need to do that or not. It seems like a lot of the issues for speeding is happening along the city streets, maybe with cities, streets that have wide streets like the area we're looking at, thirty-four foot wide curb to curb. That's where we have some problems at probably, but when you get into a twelve-foot wide, twenty-four-foot wide street, it's not that much of a problem really, because people will park on the side, which is a deterrent to speeding. But as far as a precedent, it's possible, I'll say that. But again, with the members on the traffic commission, I believe we can make good decisions on whether to do it or not.
Did the homeowners association get the majority from the people that live in their community or was it just a decision by the homeowners association?
If you give us your name and.
My name is Mike Bounds, I'm the president of the Kings Ridge HOA. We've had numerous meetings on this over the past few years, and yes, we did have a majority. Actually, it was unanimous from our homeowners that were in attendance.
That were in attendance.
Yes, and it was a quorum to vote, to have some kind of traffic calming device. And we gave the count, the traffic commission numerous options, we let them decide. And I understand there could be some precedents for this, but I'm not sure that should necessarily keep you guys from voting for it. Our HOA does have the funds to pay for it, and I understand that not everybody does, but there are neighborhoods, maybe they could get together and raise the funds. We have full liability for everything that's in our addition. And these are somewhat temporary, we can see how they work. And if they work well, then we can go to the next step if you guys so choose. So we're just trying, it's a quality of life thing. We have a lot of foot traffic in our addition. And when they walk across Kings Ridge Drive from Cambridge, they pretty much fear for their lives because they get past that chicane and they start going really quickly and they cut through the streets and they, they don't stay in their lane. And it just scares them, so we, we have people that don't want to walk or ride their bicycles because of that. It's not a lot, but it's enough to be concerned.
What were your other options that you guys looked at?
We talked about a roundabout, a mini roundabout at Cambridge and also at Canterbury. We talked about the speed humps and we let, and we liked the delineators, I think, which are kind of like a center island. And then the chokers at the middle of Kings Ridge Drive, so. Yeah, we're open for options, but we felt like this was a good one, so. And obviously, we can't tell the commission or the council, the traffic commission what to do, they have to kind of, we bring what we want, what we think we want and let them decide, so that's what they decided. And our members are in agreement.
I heard you say you have liability, I just want to reiterate, you do have total liability for these barriers that would, that would cover any, if there was damage or injury?
We have blanket liability for our homeowners association over a million dollars, over a million dollars, yes. So anything that happens that is brought to our attention, that we're being, a lawsuit brought to us, yes, it would cover that.
Okay, thank you.
You said that this was a temporary measure to see how it works and then take it to the next step.
Right.
What is?
Well, the next step could be to leave those there, the next step could be concrete. Okay, there you go.
Oh, I'm sorry, would you come up to the microphone, please? Yeah, we'd like to have you come up here and start over, please.
In your response to the delineators, these are flexible delineators, and if a vehicle rolls over them, they just bend over, go underneath the car and pop back up. And there's very little, and no damage, or no damage to the vehicle at all. We use a ton of these things around the state. So they turn black, if you see some of the areas around Oklahoma City where they've been hit, but otherwise they're flexible.
But if you choose to take them out, we have a physical concrete barrier in the road?
If that's the next step we do, yes, there'll be, you know, be a fiscal hard barrier.
No, it would still be there if they choose to take them out.
The delineators? The islands would, or the devices would be, if we go hard, payment and all, they would be delineated, yes. So they won't hit the curb, there's no guarantee that they won't, but, you know, at least they know that something's there.
Well, the ones that you've proposed that are actually screwed in the ground, is that correct? They actually bolted in the ground?
Uh, the ones that the intersections will be bolted in. The tubes can be adher, using adhesive like asphalt to put it in place.
Have you seen these devices put in other neighborhoods and were they affected?
I'm not seeing them here in Yukon or anywhere within the metro area or anything like that.
In neighborhoods or in interstates? And the roundabout wouldn't work?
We have done some research on the mini roundabouts and I know the traffic commission is a little hesitant about it, and I understand some of their misgivings. It would be in the center of the road and it would not be, I don't know, six, eight feet, it would, the street is thirty-four feet wide instead of twenty-four or whatever the actual number is, it is ten feet wider, so. It would accommodate something, but, you know, maybe the delineators could work and then if that doesn't work, then we could talk about a roundabout or something, it's, I mean, we're open to all kinds of suggestions, we're not just, we would.
I hope it works for you, I really do, because one of the things I do is I put my cars out on the street to slow people down.
There you go.
And it slows people down.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I understand, and it's such a wide street, it really doesn't slow them down there.
Well, I have a wide street in front of me, that's why I've got to put my cars out there.
Yeah, can you do inverted?
Well, I don't know if you're familiar with Landmark, Landmark is.
Yes, I do.
Speeding area.
Yes, sir.
But, Mr. Montgomery, you said that your study showed that there was not a lot of speeding and cutting across.
Yes, ma'am, like I said, again, it's perceived by the neighborhood, okay?
That the study showed.
Yeah, we did a speech study through there for about a week, and it showed people pretty much adhering to the speed limit through the neighborhood of twenty-five.
I assume, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Again, like I say, what the public perceives and what we get studies on, somehow the two just don't come together.
Yeah, I know.
And work together.
I know.
I assume since one of your options in there was to encourage additional police, even though it's a unmarked car or whatever, have you had that discussion with the chief yet at all or?
No, sir, we have not yet.
Okay, then I won't ask you for a comment tonight then, chief. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think the gentleman, as he has stated, the perceived is the speeding. Reality of the study shows, most of them are driving the speed limit, it's very rare that you do that. They did the studies in my neighborhood many times and when you, they take the high, the low, and you start really looking at, there's really, it's rare that you have a speeder.
Yeah.
I understand, but I mean, that's all over town, that somebody can speed anywhere, but if you only have one car speeding, out of all the cars going in there, it really doesn't justify having radar units and all the items out sitting there when there's other areas that we have more problems than that.
Any additional comments from anyone?
Thank you.
Including the audience, okay, thank you, gentlemen, very much. Okay, discussion is complete, therefore, vote please.
McCarron?
No.
Wooten?
No.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
No.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item thirteen, new business, is there any new business, Mr. Shivers?
No new business tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item fourteen is council discussion, Councilwoman Selby.
Thank you, I want to thank all the kids for coming out tonight, it's wonderful, I can't wait to see when you're up here doing your mock, and that will be exciting. Also want to give a wonderful thanks to the Parks and Rec, I went to the Dale Robertson's Halloween Fest that they had, and it's probably the spookiest haunted house that I've ever been to, so thank you to them, make the most of your tomorrow and be kind to one another.
Mr. Kachini?
I want to give a heads up to a lot of folks that may be watching us, Veterans Day is coming up and I realize the schools all know about it because I've been invited about four different functions in uniform, so I'll be making all of them. Not to worry, I've got them all listed and where I got to be. And I want to thank the students for showing up tonight, thank you.
Mr. Wooten?
I got to comment on the mommy and son masquerade, my little boy and my wife went and they had an amazing time. Van said the best part was the food, then he said, no, the games, no, the dancing, and then he ended up staying, spending time with his mama. So, got to say, very good job on that, thank you.
Councilwoman Yanda?
Well, I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight and good luck to the students, thank you.
I would like to echo certainly on all of the activities that we had in October. Certainly for the seniors, we had Spooksville, it was outstanding. It was really not a good weather night, but yet, I don't know the exact number, somebody could probably tell me, sixty, seventy seniors showed up to do dance and have a good time and enjoy a wonderful evening. I was really surprised, I thought it would not be well attended, and it really surprised me a lot. The Craft Festival was absolutely outstanding. And I went to that and the place was just a mob all day long. So I, you know, if Yukon's not one of the greatest places in the world to live, I don't know what is. So with that, I'll announce what's ongoing, the toy drive for Santa's toy shop has begun. Christmas with a cop, December the eleventh, they're taking names at this time. Now through the November the sixteenth, the Ladies Library Club has their annual Christmas auction, they close at noon on, through the November the sixteenth. Thursday, November the fourteenth, Sounds of the Season, reserved tickets go on sale. The Dale Robertson Senator tickets are ten dollars, a minimum of six general admission tickets on one sale. If you've not ever been to one, it is absolutely outstanding opportunity to go see really high-class entertainment here in town. Friday, November the fifteenth, Community Coffee at the Mabel Fry Library. Thursday, November the twenty-first, Christmas on Main Street. Saturday, November the twenty-third, Christmas in the Park. And with that, seeing no other business before the council, we are adjourned.